Church is going to start with prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. O merciful Father in heaven, from you comes all rule and authority over the nations of the world, for the punishment of the evil doers, and for the praise of those who do well. Graciously regard your servants, those who make, administer, and judge the laws of this nation, and look in mercy upon all the rulers of the earth. Grant that all who receive the sword as your servants may bear it according to your command. We ask your blessing especially on this meeting of our city council. Enlighten and defend them, and grant them wisdom and understanding, that under their peaceable governance, your people may be guarded and directed in righteousness, quietness, and unity, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks everybody for being here. To get a starter, we're going to approve minutes of the October 23 regular city council meeting, minutes of the October 23 work session, and the minutes of the October 27 agenda meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Subdued.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, motion passes. Reporter of the mayor?
Thank you. You were updated at the last council meeting about the achievements of our award-winning Fairhope High School band at the Heart of Dixie Band Competition. I presented the band with the certificate of achievement at Friday night's game. It was such an honor to stand before such talent, watch them perform, and show them the appreciation from our city. Ewing Marion Kaufman was an entrepreneur and humanitarian, who established the Ewing Marion Kaufman Foundation. He saw building enterprise as one of the most effective ways to realize individual promise and spur the economy. I joined mayors and entrepreneurs from across the country, it's been about three weeks ago now, who came together to address the challenges municipalities are facing today. The 2017 Kaufman Foundation Mayor's Conference on Entrepreneurship was filled with innovative solutions. The spirit of collaboration was alive and well. Their slogan, "Zero barriers, all possibilities." It was refreshing and exciting to be part of our city with, I think our city will be benefiting from this attitude as the years go by. A lifelong Fairhope entrepreneur, passed recently at the age of 96, Bessie Klump Montgomery. She graduated from Fairhope High School in 1939. Three years later, she started the downtown clothing store that would become Town and Country Shops. She is best known for founding the Fairhope French Quarter. Now a Fairhope landmark, Bessie also served as Director of the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce from 2003 to 2005. She was an active member of Fairhope throughout her life, and she will be missed. The 12 Days of Christmas banners, I think most of us, if you've been here a while, are familiar with those. We hang them up on the poles every year. They're going to be retired because their age, they're in danger of disintegrating with continued exposure to the outside conditions. Schoolchildren, Rotary Youth Club, and Shepherd Center are all participated in creating artwork for new banners. They were all assisted by local artists. While all the banners are truly fabulous, one in particular caught my eye, and we have it up there, that's the banner. This was, submit the list of the flowers he will be planting for the winter. Paul Merchant was asked to submit the flowers he will be planting this winter. From just this list, the children created that piece of artwork. I think that's great. All the artwork is on display at the Art Center through December, and I strongly recommend you go see them. I want to thank everyone for participating in this very special program. Thursday, this Thursday, is Lighting of the Trees. I mentioned last year, it was Mrs. Fugard of Stowe Jewelers on Fairhope Avenue who strung up lights on some of the downtown trees outside her store. That was over 30 years ago, and we now, that's what created the tradition that we now celebrate every year, and that's the lighting of the trees. It'll be this Thursday at 5:30. Speaking of downtown, some of you might remember that Harbor Communication was the Wi-Fi service we had about a year ago, and then they left us, and we were sad. The city has just received new Wi-Fi equipment, and we will be installing that soon in the downtown area, and I meant to get the area it's going to cover, but it's a pretty big area, and so that'll be something to look forward to. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Lance Cabanus for all the work he has done for the city. Lance is the Building Maintenance Department, which we technically don't have right now, but he kind of has been acting as that person for a long time. With all the repair and maintenance work Lance does, everything from HVAC equipment to building repair at all the city properties. He has put in untold hours working at the Fairhope docks overseeing contracted work on the seawall and the fuel dock, assuring us of the quality work that we need there. He made short order of decaying fuel tanks, has helped in reviewing property damage and estimating cost for repair, and continues to help with all the major and little things that it takes to get us in the position of taking back our marina and being able to be in business from day one. The work is far from done there, and I know he'll be around the marina often, working with our marina manager as we move forward. This is only long because it's been three weeks since our last council meeting. I served pancakes at the Rotary Youth Club Saturday, and I believe Fairhope has more people per capita than anywhere in the country who've adopted the adage, "Service above self." In attendance were three Rotary Clubs, and for a town this size, you have to admit, three Rotary Clubs in a town this size is pretty amazing. All meeting, one group meets for breakfast, one group meets for lunch, and then one group meets for evening cocktails, and you can guess which one I'm in. Anyways, we have all of the Rotary Clubs, volunteers, and many veterans. We have a rich population of giving, and it was an honor to be a part of this. And on Saturday, I also gave a welcome at the Veterans Day Sunset Prayer Service, and we are great beneficiaries of those who sacrificed for our liberty. May we always be humbly grateful to those who have stood guard in peacetime, and to those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. To all the veterans, we have a simple yet heartfelt message. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Now I'd like to open up the floor for public participation for agenda items only. So if you are, this does not pertain to the public hearings on number five, six, or seven, or eight. This will only be nine through 15, so if you'd like to speak on items nine through 15, now's your chance. When you come up, please give your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Murphy, Fairhope, Alabama. Members of the council, mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to address agenda items nine and 10, which are the final adoption to amend zoning ordinance 1253, otherwise known as Park Place PUD on the Green property. This city, as you well know, was founded by a visionary group of men and women. Their vision was developed into a plan. So extraordinary were these founders that today, we enjoy the legacy of what they created. From our waterfront, our parks, our schools, our downtown business district, our neighborhoods, and the list could go on and on. It didn't happen by chance, they had a plan, and that plan has made Fairhope a unique, vibrant, and desirable community to visit and live. Those same features that make our community special also present challenges. One of those is growth. To be clear, this is not an argument about stopping growth, rather it is a plea to manage growth. Our city has a comprehensive plan. To be clear, we understand a comprehensive plan is not a legally binding document, but it is a plan the city has adopted, and it should be used for guidance. As you know, the current plan calls for the property relating to agenda items nine and 10 to be residential. To be clear, first, we are not suggesting that Greeno Road should remain zoned residential. Secondly, we are not suggesting that owners should not be able to fully maximize the potential of their property. Lastly, we recognize the sensitivity of those residents along Greeno Road and surrounding neighborhoods who are directly impacted by future developments along this section of our city. Rather, we are suggesting that development follow a plan. A plan that is designed from a shared vision with meaningful input from all stakeholders, and a plan that continues the legacy built by the founders of this city. There's an adage that goes something like this, "When you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." Each time we deviate from the comprehensive plan, particularly along this stretch of Greeno Road, which is such a vital portal to our city, we dig the hole a bit deeper. The work of creating such a plan is not an easy task. As Wayne Dias has reminded me several times, it takes time, and I know that, you know that. But ask yourself, what if we had started this 15 years ago? How much further along would we be? What if we started it 10 years ago? How about five years ago? We must stop dancing around the elephant in the room. The challenging work of developing and implementing a sustainable comprehensive plan can no longer be delayed without jeopardizing everything beloved about this city. To be clear, we're asking the council to deny a final adoption to rezone the property of CDA LLC Carrigan Properties and the property of Robert and Deborah Green at this time. The legacy of our founders is evident in everything that has made Fairhope a special place. Tonight, you have yet another opportunity to shape not only the legacy of this council, but the legacy of this city for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to mention that we put in a proposal for the restore funds for a comprehensive land use plan, and it was for $650,000. And it has gone through the first approval stage, and now we have all of the details for the second round of approval, and I feel pretty confident that we're going to get it. I don't want to jinx it, but when that happens, we're going to have a lot better process for putting together a comprehensive planned land use, and it's going to be, I think, just really great, and really bringing to the table experts in the field from all over the country, and it will be citizen engaged 110%.
Anybody else want to speak on agenda items nine through 15? If not, going once. All right, well, I will close the public participation on agenda items, and now go to council comments. Councilman Conyers?
All right, I've got a few updates. I already covered this in the work session, but I'm going to go ahead and cover it again because not everybody would have been present for that. Environmental Advisory Board had a meeting last week. I had to leave early from the meeting, but had an opportunity to meet up a few days later with several members of the Environmental Advisory Board, and had a good conversation. A lot of that focused on just improving communication, getting their message out to the public, and a lot of times we get up here and we have a lot, a lot to cover and a lot to think about, but sometimes we gloss over what the committees are focusing on. And you know, we've got a lot of great volunteers in this town, and I don't want to have anybody feel like they've been slighted because we may not be given proper attention to what their committee does. So, for the Environmental Advisory Board, they would just like to say they appreciated Sherry Lee updating them at their prior meeting on different resiliency projects, and both in progress and that were soon to begin, and they discussed ways that they could offer assistance in that capacity. And also, they wanted to follow up further on the monitoring and testing of water around Fly Creek and Mobile Bay that we're doing through Mobile Bay Keeper, as well as to Richard Peterson, so I will circle back up with them on that additional information. For the Library Board, they would just say they'd encourage people to come by and see the Makerspace that they have. It's kind of small, limited space, but very innovative, and would love people to come check it out, and they're hoping to expand that. And they wanted me to let everyone know that the Chocolate and Champagne fundraiser is coming up January 27th, that's a Saturday. Tickets will be on sale in a couple of weeks, so please come out, support the library, and attend that event. And then lastly, the Historic Preservation Committee, you know, their goal is to implement some type of historic preservation ordinance that would allow for incentives, I guess, to maintain historical buildings in and around Fairhope, and that committee has had some difficulty finding, I guess, a good time to meet in order to establish a quorum. As the liaison, I happened to not be in Fairhope on the day that they meet, so that's something that we've kicked around as far as either changing that time, or what kind of method of communication we're going to have to make sure that we're all in sync. But aside from that, I'd just like to point out that, as the mayor said, Lighting of the Trees is coming up Thursday, and it's a great event, family-friendly event, everyone should attend, and just wanted to mention something on the, for the Finance Committee, we're working on the budget, and I'm not on that committee, but we're working on the budget. I'm anxious to have a budget passed sooner rather than later, but I just wanted to point out that where I'm coming up short still, and still working on it, is not, I like the way mayor has presented the budget, in that you can break things down, and you really have a much better feel for where funds are being spent, and which different departments, and breaking out the utilities separately so that you can really see how the utilities impact the city. But my concern, what I'm still working towards, is the expenses increasing from 28 to 32 million in the proposed budget. So that's what I'm working on trying to shave that number down, that $4 million increase in expenses, I'm working towards trying to figure out what I can carve out of that to feel comfortable with it.
Right, and that increase, it's, we're still reducing our reliance on the, this budget will reduce the reliance on utilities by about 2.4 million, and that can't be discounted. That could easily be added back in and make up a lot of that difference. But in addition to reducing our reliance on utilities, we are bringing in, you know, the capital purchases and personnel that we've needed for a very long time, because that just has not increased in 10 years. So all of those things have to be considered. Yes, we're spending more money, but we're not, you know, we're doing it in a way that's in line with spending from cash reserves, impact fees, and utility transfer that's less than what we've done in the past.
All right, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. I want to thank all the city employees that helped set up for the Veterans Day Parade. It was a great event we had, and I always enjoy getting the opportunity to meet some of those that come from the Greatest Generation. Also, I want to thank the local schools and their Veterans Day programs. Just great to see the patriotism in our schools, and standing up for prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. So, thank you, Fairhope Schools. Yeah, I want to make a few comments on Mr. Murphy, you know, as regards to Greeno Road. You know, that, to me, is one of the biggest concerns we have. You said, you know, maybe 10 years ago if we could have addressed this. Unfortunately, I think until here recently, nobody wanted to address it, and that's what the reason it's always been no, 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 remain residential, and I think the Planning Commission along with council is on the same page. Greeno Road is going to be commercial, so to me, I think we're just kind of creeping along as we're coming up with a plan, so maybe growing organically on Greeno for the current time until we do get a plan. That's it.
All right, thank you, Robert. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Fairhope High School Football Team, the Pirates, for a great season this year. They came up a little short this past weekend playoffs, but overall, I think they have had a great season, and brought a lot of enjoyment and entertainment to the city of Fairhope. And I think Coach Carter needs to be commended on the fact that he took a group of young men, young boys, and turned it into a group of young men. They did a fine job this year. I think they did, like I say, a real good job.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I do like going first on council comments, because there's not, I get first take at anything I want to comment on, so going last is less fun. But there's still a couple of things. I would like to reiterate what Robert said, the Veterans Day Parade, great job to all those who helped honor our veterans at this year's Veterans Day Parade. We had a great time. I didn't get to walk, but I got to have donuts, and so I enjoyed that part for sure. We do have tree lighting on Thursday. We have several events to follow that. We have the Fairhope, the outdoor movie on Fairhope Avenue Saturday night, which is Polar Express. We do it every year, it's a great time. Complimentary popcorn, kids are encouraged to wear their Christmas pajamas. I don't know if adults are encouraged to wear their Christmas pajamas, so I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to mention that. Follow that up, we have the 58th Annual Fairhope Christmas Open House, holiday shopping downtown, or Christmas music, and then the following week, instead of Black Friday, we celebrate Plaid Friday in downtown Fairhope, shop, shopping local, support local business. And then finally, we have Small Saturday, following Plaid Friday is Small Business Saturday in Fairhope. So get out, shop in Fairhope, support your local businesses. And then also, I also had the pleasure of attending the Rotary Youth Club Pancake Breakfast. The mayor was serving them, I had the opportunity to cook them. So anybody that didn't get a pancake that's exactly round, I'm probably responsible for that. Had a little trouble with the griddle outside. And, but there was, you know, I'm not a member of any of the three Rotary Groups that put that event on, but they still allowed me the opportunity to come out and help serve, and I had a great time. Enjoyed a lot of good people out there. And last, I want to recognize, we have some Cub Scouts in the audience, the Cub Scout Den from PAC 47, the Thunderhawks are here for the city council meeting tonight, so right, stand up, guys. Thank you for coming. And the last thing I want to say is that, don't let it sneak up on you, the Fairhope Christmas Parade is almost here. It is, it'll roll through downtown the first Friday of December, starts at 7 o'clock, so put it on your calendars. And that's all I've got, so thank you, and we will now move into the agenda here. So Wayne, you are up.
Thank you, Councilman. The first, well, I guess, I don't, let me, let me read what item number five is here. I'm getting ahead of myself, trying to go, be too efficient here in what I'm, item number five is a public hearing. It's an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253. Request is on the property of Todd Roberts to R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District concurrent with annexation. This property is generally located at 19870 County Road 13, known as Parcel B, Fairhope, Alabama. And so I think the first thing I need to do is let somebody introduce.
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Take it away.
Thank you, Councilman. As you said, this is a rezoning and an annexation. The applicant's Todd Roberts, the property consists of about 1.04 acres. It is currently located in unincorporated Baldwin County, and it's one parcel. They're also asking to sort of do a lot line adjustment as part of the annexation and the rezoning. The request of rezoning is R2 Medium Density Single Family. It is adjacent to other R2, as you can see from the map in your packet. This did go to the Planning Commission, and they recommend approval, and staff also recommends approval of this application of annexation, and also with land use.
Did staff have any additional recommendations with this approval?
We did. Let me get those, and I'll read those for you. The staff recommendations, and also the Planning Commission recommendations, was annexation of the subject property into the city of Fair, as adopted by city council, and administer approval of the common lot line, Parcel B and C, to unify the two parcels into one parcel number, and that's something that we will do in-house, but it is part of the recommendation.
Okay. All right. We have to answer any questions. All right, Councilman, any questions, any discussion? All right, if not, we can entertain a motion to suspend the rules and vote for immediate consideration?
Public hearing.
Sorry. Skipping a, one small step, and that is opening the public hearing for this public hearing. So anybody that's here to talk about agenda item number five, we will hear you now. All right. I will close the public hearing then, and, Councilman, now I will ask you if you have any discussion? None's come up in the last minute? Okay. All right, well, then I will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules, and if not, this will lay over two weeks to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. All right, there is no motion, so this will lay over till our next council meeting. All right. Item number six on the agenda is another public hearing. Ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, request to rezone the property of Sweetwater Investments LLC from R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District to B4 Business and Professional District. This property is generally located at 20040 State Highway 181, Fairhope, Alabama.
Thank you, Councilman. This is, again, a rezoning of 1.31 acres. It's at the northeast corner of 181 and Windmill Road. The current zoning is R2 Medium Density Residential. The requested zoning is B4, and the B4 uses, as outlined in your staff report, is really more geared towards professional office and businesses there. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission also recommends approval, and there are no conditions for those approval.
All right, I will, I will open the public hearing at this point? Okay, sorry, I need an introduction.
I'll introduce ordinance.
Thank you, Jimmy. Now I will open up the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on agenda item number six? All right, if nobody's here for item number six, I will close the public hearing, and I will open council discussion. Any discussion on item number six, Councilman? All right. If not, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to, for immediate consideration, and if not, this will lay over to our next council meeting. No motion, this will lay over to our next council meeting. All right, next is agenda item number seven, which is a public hearing to amend zoning ordinance 1253, zoning ordinance amendment, Article 9, Section C, definitions, building height, the vertical distance measured from the average natural elevation of the lot to the mean point of the roof of the building. Wayne, I'm going to let you discuss this for us.
Great, thank you. The purpose of this amendment is to create continuity between the zoning ordinance and the building code. Eric Cortez and I worked on this one together, and basically what we're trying, what we're doing is redefining the building height and going to more of a traditional definition of building height that you find throughout Baldwin County, and also the parts of the country, and as well as bringing it kind of into continuity with the building code. What we're requesting is to strike a couple small provisions of the definition of building height. Right now, it says the vertical distance measured from the average natural elevation of the lot at the front of the building to the hot, to the highest point of the roof of the building. So you're measuring from the front of the building to the very highest point, which kind of can create architectural problems. You don't get the, as pleasing sometimes of an architectural element of the building. I'm sure Councilman Brown is familiar with this as well. What we're wanting to change that to is to strike the portion at the front of the building and the highest to the mean point of the roof of the building. So the mean grade to the roof, to the mean of the roof. That's what we're trying to go to, and we feel like this is, again, a change that will make some buildings more architecturally pleasing, rather than having strange roof lines, trying to get as much as you can under the roof without violating the current definition of that. I'm here to answer any questions. I think Eric Cortez is here as well, that can answer questions if necessary.
Yeah, Wayne, my question would just be, as some of us non-builders, is this, is this sort of a normal way for this to be done?
this sort of a normal way for this to be done? Is this a normal definition for us to be using?
From my experience, it is, yes, sir. I know the county uses the similar definition that we're proposing. I believe most of the cities do. From my experience, other states as well, this is very common.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. So at this point, I'd like, well, I need somebody to introduce.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thanks, sir. And at this point, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Seven. If there are no takers, I will close the public hearing, and I'll open it up for council discussion. If there is no council discussion, then I will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules and for immediate consideration. If there is no motion, then this will carry over till the next scheduled council meeting. All right. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Eight is a public hearing, zoning ordinance amendment for Article Five, Section B, the Central Business District overlay proposed expansion. Take it away, Wayne.
Thank you, Councilman. This is sort of a two parts. We have an overlay area that's defined on the map, and has a legal description of that area. We're discussing amending that, the configuration of the CBD boundaries, and then also, we have some textual changes that we're talking, we're requesting to be made to the actual language of the CBD language. One thing that we have found is that I have not done a very good job of articulating or communicating with the public about the uses that are residential. What we're proposing it, what we propose is to, for, to encourage more mixed-use downtown and in the CBD. What we were encouraging was, or recommending, was removing the parking requirement for residential. I think there's some concern about that. What I would suggest is that part of, that part of this, where it talks about residential parking downtown, that we, we hold that off, keep it as it is, and address that in a few months. We have a wayfinding program that we're, hopefully, we'll be bringing forward, which will clearly define and locate the public parking that's available. I think that's probably a better time to bring that up, to discuss that. So again, requesting to kind of split that part off about the parking for residential and take that up at another time. What we are talking about tonight, or requesting, is an expansion of the CBD boundaries in some areas and contracting it in other areas. What we, what we did first and foremost is we defined the center of downtown at, as being the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Section Street. Typically, what you want to do is encourage downtowns to be walkable. The term walkability is, it can be defined in a half-mile radius of a natural walk, which is about a half-mile radius. And looking at the CBD, we, in your packet, you see a radius that we drew with that half a mile, I'm sorry, quarter-mile. And I think all of our proposals of expanding the CBD falls within that quarter-mile radius and fits the standards of walkability. And so you'll see some areas that we've extended it out further, some areas that we contracted it slightly, and other areas. One of our primary goals is to encourage more, more mixed-use, more development on some sites that probably are underutilized. And so that's one of our primary goals, and you can see from our, from my proposal, that we've tried to take in some of those areas. I think just about every place that we have extended it to does have onsite, on-street parking, except for the area that's out Fairhope Avenue going towards 181. In that area, if you read in our proposal, we are requesting that, in that area, a parking study be done to determine the appropriate level of parking. Many times, you might, when you have a mixed-use site, you may have, you may have office uses that are using parking in the daytime, and you might have a restaurant use that has parking peak demand at night. And so, rather than providing parking to the furthest extent for each one of those, we're looking at maybe at doing a parking study to determine what the maximum parking periods are and providing the parking for those peak times at different times of the day and night, rather than just to see a parking, again, trying to make parking a little smarter in how it's used. So that's first and foremost what we're, what we're talking about. Also, the building height, currently, right now, the maximum height downtown is 35 feet with mixed-use. We are proposing to go to 40 feet with a maximum of three stories. And this is primarily, again, encouraging development, but also a little more architectural creativity downtown, taller roofs internally, height, ceiling heights, and things of that nature. And so that's also part of our recommendation as well.
And Wayne, was this, this was also voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission?
It was. It was recommended for approval.
Okay. All right, well, I will.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Jimmy has introduced the ordinance, and so at this point, I will open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak on Agenda Item Number Eight, now is your opportunity. Yes, sir. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Matt McCauley. I live at Tinn Wood Grove Circle. I have a concern about the parking. It seems to be that we're getting the cart before the horse here. He mentioned the parking study, which is a good idea. Why don't we do that first? We have parking problems in town already. I don't see any rush to judgment to make the problem worse instead of better. I'm not really opposed to extending the district, but I think that it is your responsibility to provide parking. If you're not going to allow or force the builder to put parking onsite, then you have the responsibility of providing that parking. So I think that perhaps you should postpone consideration tonight until the parking study's done.
Well, I don't, since this is a public hearing, unless there is a motion to suspend with the rules, I don't think it will be voted on tonight.
I do recommend that we do the parking study first, provide parking.
But, but I don't think, and Wayne, you can chime in with this, I don't think, the way they've written it now, this will change the parking requirements as, anything from, anything different from what currently stands.
Exactly. Originally, we had proposed for eliminating the parking requirement onsite for mixed-use residential. Again, that part, we're gonna, we should separate off and keep it as it is right now, until, as Mr. McCauley has discussed, until we have a little more information about parking. Again, we have a wayfinding program that we're looking at, and we've got some analysis going on right now. I think that parking issue for residential onsite will be better addressed at that time, once we have more information, and we can maybe do a better job of discussing that and make that available to the public.
Yeah, so, yes.
But the residential, I mean, excuse me, the retail, those people have to park somewhere, too.
That's right, yes, sir.
And if it's not onsite, where are they gonna park?
I think what Wayne mentioned, too, Mr. McCauley, is that, you know, if, if you have mixed-use, and right now, you currently, unless you have a parking space, you can't have residential above a business, for example. They can still have office space, and in office space, they would be parked there all day, and it would usually be more than a residence home. So that's the point. They're not voting on that today. It's gonna be tabled, but those are things to consider. Mixed-use, overall, could potentially help the parking issue, because residents don't take up as much parking as office space, additional retail, I mean, whatever you would build in its place.
But if you drive, I saw the map, if you drive that space, there's very little parking there now. Those spaces are already being utilized.
Right, but if you, if something is being built, for example, most everything downtown, I think, is retail and other businesses. If you have the upstairs, and that's usually where people are gonna build residence, would be upstairs from an existing retailer or something like that. If you discourage residential because of that parking, then the developer could build office space, lots of office space. People take, using that office space, have more cars than a resident for that same square footage. So, I mean, those are things to consider, too.
You lost me somewhere in there, but that's okay.
Can somebody explain that better than me? I thought you did a better job, Wayne.
All I'm saying is that if, if you're not going to require the development, whatever it is, to provide parking, we'll forget residential for now, then where are they gonna park? That's my simple question. It should be.
I think I can answer that.
I'm gonna go.
Yeah, I think, I think I can answer that.
Thank you, sir.
You know, one of the things I think we have right now is, we have, we have parking that not many people know of. The parking deck is rarely filled. There's other parking areas around town. The on-street parking downtown is congested at times, but there's, as we all know, there's other areas around town you can park in. They're, they're not as crowded. What, as far as the wayfinding program that Sherry Lee is working on, we want to identify those, make sure, make those readily available for visitors who are out of town to know where they're at. And so I believe, you know, there is parking. We've just gotta make sure that we clearly indicate where that is, so people who don't, who aren't from Fairhope know where to park at. Because, again, the parking deck is not utilized very often. I think what the mayor is getting at is that when residential use would, would, on the second story of a building generates a lot less parking requirement or demand than a retail or an office-type use. And I think that, that's the, that's, that's what I think we're trying to get at. But again, I think there's some things we're working on that are in the works. We're not, with this proposal, we've take, we've requested to take off the table, the parking requirement, and leave the parking as it is right now. And as we go forward with the wayfinding program, and we define the parking, we identify the parking, we give, you know, proper locations of the parking, and so people know where it's located, I think we can, we can help that to a great degree by making those, making that much more utilized, and again, so people know where it is. And I think a lot of times, people see parking on Fairhope Avenue, and it's, it is difficult at times, but there's other areas to park other than Fairhope Avenue. And many times, those are in parking lots that are owned by the city. And again, the parking deck, you know, across from the school, there's places like that you can, you can park.
Thank you, Wayne. Anybody else want to speak? The public hearing is still open on Agenda Item Number, on Number Eight. Anybody else want to talk about Number Eight? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing and open council comments. Councilman? Okay. You know, I will say this just briefly, and Wayne, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think I'm saying what you said, but any business that does not have, since we're not altering residential, because I know that was a source of concern for a lot of people, if we're, as it currently stands, any business in the Central Business District that does not have on-the-street parking in front of its store, has to have a parking study to see whether or not they have to supply their own parking?
The only area we're asking for the parking study is north of the post office, north of there. There's a little triangular-shaped piece that takes in, you know, the hardware store north of there. It takes in the Portico site. In that area, because there is no on-street parking there, that's what we're saying, you gotta have parking onsite based on a parking study.
Gotcha.
Away from that area downtown, you've got a lot of on-street parking. We're not saying in that area at all. That will remain as it is right now. Again, the only area is that brand, the new area we've defined north of there. It's sort of the gateway into downtown. That's why we wanted to have maybe a little bit of variety there, because that is sort of the gateway into downtown, coming down Fairhope Avenue, down the hill. And those are areas, again, instead of just having an outright parking requirement for each particular use, I think many times, we're better served as, when you have these mixed-use sites, doing a parking study to analyze the demands for its use. If you're being a little more cagey on the parking, we don't want to, we don't want to have parking like at Walmart, where you've got more parking you'll ever need, and you only use it once a year at peak. And we don't want to define, we don't want to design for the peak. We want to design for the average use and the average demand of parking.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other comments from the council? If not, then I will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules for immediate consideration, and if no motion is made, then this will lay over to our next council meeting. Hearing no motion, it will lay over to the next council meeting. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Nine, it is final adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance number 1253, request to rezone property of CDA LLC and Carrigan Properties LLC from R1 low-density single-family residential district and R4 high-density multifamily residential district to a PUD planned unit development. This property is located at 806 and 812 North Greeno Road, Fairhope, Alabama.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll be brief. This is, we've heard this before. The Parkplace PUD is comprised of 11 buildings of two and three stories, approximately 6,000 square feet of office, retail, medical, and about seven dwelling units, residential, mixed-use. Again, this was at the last meeting. Staff, based on the Comfort of Plan, there are some concerns there. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Lisa, am I missing any steps? Have I asked for council comments at this point?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I will ask for council comments at this time.
Wayne, I guess I would just point out that the current, current use of the property is zone residential. It's currently mobile home park, and the proposed use would have some residential, although a limited amount, about 15,000 square feet, and the overall projects.
Right.
It would be how many square feet?
Yes, it'll be a mixed-use project with some heavy landscaping on the front, creating a, not a visual buffer, but a little more visual pleasing as you drive in, drive down Greeno. The Comfort of Plan and this, this is where it's a little difficult, because the Comfort of Plan does just basically call for an outright prohibition to anything other than residential there. And I think in your staff board, it's articulated that way in there. So I'm bound to go by what the Comfort of Plan says. I'll readily admit, I think the Comfort of Plan, we could do, that's not feasible to some degree, and I think we could, as we move forward, we talked, we've talked about long-term planning. Hopefully, in the next year or so, we'll be bringing back a plan to the council that really is a sensible, workable, pleasing plan for Greeno Road. So I guess what I'm saying is, my professional opinion is based on the Comfort of Plan. My personal opinion may be a little different from that, but it is not conducive to residential, especially when you have Greeno Road and the traffic, 26,000 trips per day there. It does back up to Auburn Extension Service property and so forth. And so I guess, from that standpoint, we have a divergence of, from my philosophy, but based on the Comfort of Plan, it doesn't support it. However, I think I realize and understand the issues here and the use of the property, and it's what's, what's most conducive in that location.
I think Councilman Brown addressed it earlier, that the reality that the council's having to address right now is that, you know, this parcel is zone residential. It's really not gonna be residential. It's just not a feasible use for it. So, keeping that in mind, trying to come up with the best solution that protects the area as much as you can for the long term, but allows a better-suited use for, for what's currently there. And that's the dilemma, I think, we're trying to work through on, on everything along Greeno Road.
Right. And I think Greeno Road is, I mean, North Greeno is definitely the problem area. I think the proposal, from my personal judgment, it's probably a reasonable use of that, that property. I hope that we can bring more clarity in the future, because I know this is difficult for you all to make these decisions, and it is for me as well, when sometimes the city's plans don't support this. And I think we should, we could do a better job from the planning standpoint in putting together a Comfort of Plan for Greeno Road that's much more, again, feasible and common sense approach to that. So, I definitely understand that. But I, but I will, above all, we want to develop a plan for Greeno Road. This is by far the most problematic, problematic area we have, and hopefully in the future. Again, we won't have these difficulties like this, where we're just kind of up in the air, and we, you've got conflicting, you know, plans the city has and so forth, so.
Yeah, I think, I think my issue, did I cut you off, Robert?
No, you go ahead.
You know, is, is, I am a rule follower by nature, and so when I hear somebody say this doesn't fit with the plan, that's usually an easy no for me. What I'd really like for us to see is something that I know I've heard TJ say before, which is, you know, find something, put something in place that, that there's, there's little wiggle room and less room for interpretation. Because I look at this, and I'm kind of like you, Wayne. I look at it from a, a black and white standpoint, it doesn't fit.
Mm-hmm.
But, but what does fit is not, is not fit for that area.
Right.
And so I'm stuck with the dilemma of stick to exactly what the language of the law is and turn down a project that is perfect, it makes perfect sense for this, or kind of use my judgment to say, okay, well, you know, I'm sitting here for a reason. Let me, let me use-
Let me use some common sense and figure out what needs to be done. And so I'd rather there be less of those where I'm having to use common sense, because sometimes I might not use it correctly.
Well, you know, I think having definitive plans is better for the public, it's better for the neighbors, it's better for the city, and it's better for the developer, because they know what's in front of them, they know what the requirements are. And I've always been a big believer of having consistent regulations that are easily understood, easily followed, and you alleviate a lot of the gnashing of teeth when it comes to these issues like this. And that's what we're hoping to achieve, you know, as we move forward with plans for Greeno. The mayor alluded to that a minute ago. We're seeking funding opportunities, which I hope we'll get, to bring in some really world-class, you know, urban planners to come and take a look at Greeno Road and take their suggestions and evaluate those and put together a plan that I think is workable and will, 20 years from now, will think, well, that's a great entrance into Fairhope. You know, that's what we're, that's my goal is. 20 years from now, I want people to look at and say, wow, they did a great job with Greeno Road. And so that's what our goal is. But until then, we're kind of limited. We're dealing with what we have. And again, and I agree with you, Councilman Robinson, that, you know, what it says is one thing, what it's most feasible for is something different.
Right. There's also two properties to the north. There's a PUD already, correct?
That's right. There is a PUD to the north of Hyatt property. So there is a pattern that's been introduced there, which this will be consistent with.
Any other comments, Councilman?
And Wayne, just the PUD, I mean, that gives us a little bit more controls if we are to consider PUD than rather just a straight commercial.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It does, and they've submitted a site plan. Of course, any development would have to be in concert with that site plan. Any deviation would have to come back. Any major deviation would have to come back to the council for an amendment to that. But yes, they have submitted that, and again, the buffering was one of the concerns the Planning Commission had. I believe that Larry Smith went back and added some buffering to that, some trees, and under-story trees, over-story trees, trying to, not trying to hide it, but try to make it more pleasing with the landscaped appearance as you move in. And also, you have the landscape ordinance we have as well, so that's all working together.
Thank you, Wayne. There are no additional comments. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second for final adoption. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Council President Breton.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to Number 10. Number 10 is final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance 1253, request to rezone property of Robert and Deborah Green from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to B2 General Business District. This property is generally located at 415 North Greeno Road, Fairhope, Alabama.
Again, talking about Greeno Road and I guess the difficulty with the current situation, this is again, the Green Nursery property. It consists of 2.8 acres. The request is to go from currently zoned as R1 Low Density Residential to B2 General Business. I think the current use is of a nursery variety with some retail in there. This is something that we discussed before. I want to make a couple of points. I know at the last meeting, it was discussed about a site plan or a PUD approval. They only have 2.8 acres, so they cannot do a PUD, because it requires three acres, you know, so they don't have the necessary acres to do a PUD here, because again, our minimum is three acres. We discussed this at length at the last meeting. I believe that the Greens' attorney is here, who may want to address a couple of issues with the council, and I'll ask him if I could...
Sure.
...to come up and discuss those with the council. Again, staff and the Planning Commission recommended a favorable recommendation for the rezoning, and so I'll ask Mr. Blackburn to come up if he would.
And I would like to say, just for transparency's sake with the attorney coming up here, that, you know, we've talked about this at planning and zoning, this particular rezoning, we talked about it at the last meeting, and I know that Councilman Conyers and Councilman Brown had the opportunity to meet with you and Wayne, or I'm sorry, the two of you with Wayne and the Greens before with their attorney. So Councilman Boone and I were not privy to that meeting, so I'd be interested to know if there's any... I know we talked about potential restrictions last time, and I know there was some hesitancy on behalf of the Greens, and I recognize the reason for that. But hopefully, this will be... Mr. Blackburn, will you come up, please, and share with Mr. Boone and I, I guess, whether some agreements have been made or...
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I'm Dan Blackburn. I represent the Greens. Both they and I have had discussions with various council members over the last couple of weeks. Actually, at least two of the council members had requested if the Greens would be agreeable to excluding certain uses from the B2 designation if the council saw fit to approve it. And I think in the general discussion, those uses were gas station, automotive repair center, and dry cleaners. And the Greens are agreeable to excluding those three uses from the otherwise the B2 approval. However, if the council is of a mind to approve it, subject to those excluded uses, unfortunately, we have a very recent Alabama Supreme Court decision, less than two weeks old, that requires that the ordinance as voted on by the council be identical to the ordinance as it was published. So that leaves us in a situation where if the council wanted to go forward on the negotiated agreement, for lack of a better word, I think the appropriate action tonight would be to table the ordinance, allow time for the amended ordinance to be republished. We'd come back, we'd have a second public hearing on the amended proposed revision to the ordinance, and then the council could take it up for consideration.
Okay. So in the event that we did that, we could, so in order for it to be advertised, we have to put it off the public hearing for two weeks, but we could, at that point, vote for immediate consideration if it was determined that was appropriate at that point in time.
That's correct.
In order to take it...
It's going to take longer than two weeks. You have to publish it twice consecutive weeks, once in two public, and then after that, 15 days after the published day, I'd have to sit there and vote here.
So it'd be set for what, our December meeting? Probably a month?
Depends on publication dates.
Do we have the wording of the ordinance as it would be amended?
No.
Will Wayne or Dan help us get that?
Yeah, I can coordinate that with Wayne. Debbie told me just a minute ago that she thinks that, and Lisa, you may be able to, you may know this off the top of your head, Debbie seems to think that the deadline for getting it to the newspaper is Wednesday at noon for the following Wednesday publication. If that's correct, we can coordinate that and get it to you in time to meet that deadline.
It's possible, but I've got to check the dates because of the Thanksgiving holidays coming up.
True.
Well, I know from, I guess from the Greens' perspective, I'm assuming that they'd rather have it heard sooner than later, but if there's some agreement that can be reached, maybe it might be best to try to table it and get it done, maybe as soon as we can, but with this caveat and these exceptions. And so, council, as far as tabling it, does somebody have to vote to table it?
I think there has to be a motion to table it, yes.
Well, I guess at this point, you guys want to say something else, or is it okay for a...
So much as all you can say.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of things that I want to say that, no, we just wanted to make it clear that we're willing to work with the city on this and appreciate the city working with us. Would like to get this done expeditiously, we're hoping to take care of it tonight, make the city and the city council feel better, and to have this in the restrictions, then, you know, we'll do what needs to be done.
Thank you. Thank you both for your patience. I appreciate it. Well, then, I guess at this time then, I will entertain a motion to table this until we have met all of the publication rules.
And I have a further question just for the Greens, because I know when we were having a conversation prior to the meeting, it was indicated that you preferred not to have anything in any deed restrictions. So I'm just asking, I guess, for clarification. If there were self-imposed deed restrictions, that would change my perspective on the timing of this. And Danny, I know you and I just talked about this an hour or two ago, so...
Yeah, right. I think that was me that said that I personally was not in favor of deed restrictions. I think the same thing can be accomplished by the conditional approval of the ordinance. Of course, my client can make a contrary decision against my advice if they choose to.
I misspoke. Listen to the council, please.
Okay. So, having heard that, I think we would stand by our position that we would rather not deed restrict anything, but could abide by agreeable exceptions to use in the ordinance as amended.
Okay. I'm making a motion to table the ordinance.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is this a roll call or just all in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. A motion is tabled. Item Number 11 is a resolution accepting the public streets, public right-ofways, and all of Fairhope's public utilities located in public right-ofways within Old Battles Village Phase Two for maintenance subject to the bond posted and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreements between the City of Fairhope and Truyn Homes LLC.
Thank you, Councilman. We have, staff has done the necessary inspections and so forth for Old Battles Village Phase Two, and we recommend accepting the public streets and public right-ofways and all the utilities.
Everything looking order, Wayne?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And again, for those who don't know, is this something that we commonly do in all completed submissions?
We do.
Okay. All right. Well, with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next up is Agenda Item Number 12, accepting the public streets, public right-ofways, and all of Fairhope's public utilities located in public right-ofways within Phase Two of Silverleaf at Firethorn for maintenance subject to the bond posted and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreements between the City of Fairhope and Firethorn Development LLC.
Again, staff has done the necessary inspections and recommends accepting the public streets and right-ofways and utilities.
Okay. All right. Well, that said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. All right. The next agenda item is Number 13, resolution that the City Council authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to temporary, I think temporarily fill in, fill the position of Special Events Coordinator at a pay grade of 20 with a salary not to exceed the minimum of that grade and not to allow the temporary employee to work, oh, I'm sorry, and to allow the temporary employee to work up to 40 hours per each week, which does not include benefits as long as the employee does not work over the 90 days or until Special Events Coordinator returns to work plus seven working days. To make motion and discussion?
All right. So anybody want to make a motion to approve or a motion to deny? Does anybody have a motion?
I've got some questions about it, but we got to make a motion to get to that point?
I don't know that we have to.
All right. Well, my question would be, I know we recently promoted somebody from part-time to full-time. I was thinking to cover this exact capacity, so did I miss that earlier?
Yeah. So the part-time, can y'all hear me? The part-time to full-time was for the NIC Center, and that was based on some other...
Okay. That's what I was...
Things going on there. This is for another employee who will be out for an extended amount of time.
Got you.
And this will be to cover her.
Not related to that other...
No, unrelated completely.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but when we talk about that, we talk specifically about a young lady being gone for temporarily, and she would, and this temporary, this other position would fill in for that.
This, what you may be thinking about is this person who has this position now, Paige, does not work for the NIC Center, and so we were trying to make some more separation between those two jobs. And there is someone else at the NIC Center who has got some health issues and would be out, and so we were moving this person to full-time to fill the needs that the NIC Center has. So that's already been done, that position, and they're working away in the NIC Center. This is to cover maternity leave for a while. Our current Special Events Coordinator will be out for the full leave time.
My question would be, do we think that whoever, as someone who was married to Fairhope's former Special Events Coordinator, I think I know this job better than some might, and there's a lot that goes into it.
Do you think she would apply if it were approved?
She's plenty busy already.
I figure.
But do we think that whoever we bring in is going to be able to sort of get up to speed quick enough to do what needs, to know what needs to be done and be able to do it?
So our current Special Events Coordinator is very good, as you know, and we have been working on logistics for every single thing that has to be done, and she'll be gone during our busiest period, so all the way through Mardi Gras. So this person will be facilitating all of the things that are laid out in these documents that we've created for each event.
And this isn't necessarily for today, but I have noticed a pattern here, at least recently, of us hiring temporary fill-ins for people that go off leave. I'd like to, and again, I don't work inside the city, so I don't know exactly what goes on inside and out, but on a day-to-day basis at least, but I'd like to see more cross-training of employees so that there are internal fill-ins. And I know everybody has their day-to-day job that they are responsible for, but I think that there are probably ways that we could have maybe multiple people cross-trained on certain things, so that when one person goes out, one person is not filling that person's job, because they have their own, but maybe if two or three people are kind of doing that job, little portions of it, that maybe we could avoid maybe having to hire temporary fill-ins.
And I definitely agree with you, and I would say that on a day-to-day basis, we do a lot of that, actually, that you don't hear about behind the scenes. There is a lot of filling in when people are out, and I think we do it pretty well. We don't have a whole lot of redundancy in some departments, but this particular position...
Right.
That's kind of, she's it.
I understand.
I mean, there's, you know, I do a different position than what she does.
Sure. Somebody else got any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to add that, you know, the alternative of not hiring somebody is not having those services for the special events the busiest time of year. I just, the little bit of investment there, I mean, people being off sick or even off for a week on vacation is totally different than knowing that somebody's going to be off for 90 days. We cannot afford that during the fall and through Mardi Gras. I just, we're short-staffed as it is, you know, and if these things don't go smoothly, you know, that's, those are things that are, this would be the reason. We can't expect to hire somebody to be up to date as Paige, but the alternative is having nothing.
Is this position going to be advertised?
Yeah. It would. Just like, I think we did this for purchasing too, but I don't think it ever happened.
We didn't hire anybody then.
Right.
This position is also in the budget.
It would be the same, advertised.
This is something we've been planning for a long time, because this is something we've known about.
Yeah, we knew. I've been having semi-panic attacks about it ever since she told me she was pregnant.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Item Number 13.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion? We got a second?
I guess I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Item passes. Thanks, Sherri Lee.
Thank you.
Next item is item number 14. Did the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2017 be extended through December 18th, 2017 to allow the invoices and expenditures to continue as needed? I think this is pretty self-explanatory. We're just keeping things going until we get the budget approved. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 15, it's a resolution that the City of Fairhope hereby adopts and approves the community development budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. And just so everybody's clear about this, what this is, this is approving the expenditures for money that we give outside programs and for our own in-house events and, and things such as that. This is not a budget for any particular department. So with that said, I will entertain a, a motion to approve number 15.
Should the details be listed for people? I think the details need to be listed.
I don't know that we, well, I'll be glad to read them out if that helps. This is the people that will be receiving money from this, outside of what we spend on our in-house events. This will be money going to outside sources. We have the Ballin County Economic Development Alliance is getting $15,000. Thomas Hospital Foundation, $50,000. Rotary Youth Club will be getting $50,000. The Optimist Club Dogwood Trail Program will be getting $2,000. The Mobile Bay National Estuary Program will be getting $5,000. There's a miscellaneous golf for Thief, which will be getting $2,500. Fairhope Film Festival will be getting $8,000. The Education Advisory Committee will be getting $350,000. Ecumenical Ministries will be getting $10,000. The Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce will be getting $21,000. The Eastern Shore Art Center will be getting $20,000. The Downtown Fairhope Business Association will be getting $20,000. And the Ballin County Trailblazers Walking School Bus will be getting $5,000.
Is this, that's not what I have. I don't, I mean, is this a different copy, Lisa?
That's, what I read, what I just read right there, Mayor, was the council's far-right column. The second column, second to the right, was what was proposed, and the far-right is what we are voting to approve tonight.
I just want to point out that I did put more money in for the schools. I put 400, and it was, this is for 350. Also, the Pirate Booster for 35,000 is being cut. I mean, I think that's important to talk about.
Sure, and I'll be, I'll be glad to address, at least from the Pirate Booster. I did have a conversation with Councilman, Council President Burrell this morning about that. The original $35,000 was for a specified five-year period to pay for capital, so I think capital improvements that five years ran out, and so it wasn't supposed to carry over for this year. It wasn't supposed to be in perpetuity. I think the council, and obviously I'm speaking for myself, but I think everybody would probably agree, if there are additional needs that the Booster Club would like to bring us and some additional capital improvements that they would like us to consider, I'm sure we'd be very willing to do that. But the original commitment was 35,000 for five years, and that did expire, and so that's why it was not included in this. But again, I'd be all ears to hear of any of their other needs that they'd have or anything else we can address.
And I think we have a similar arrangement with the Thomas Hospital Foundation or Thomas Hospital. I think that's 50,000 for five years, and we're probably three or four years in, maybe, if you fact, if you count this year. So that, that would eventually go away as well.
And like I said, what I wanted to point out too about the five schools getting more funding this year for 400,000, you know, right now, I just want to give an example of the Airport Authority, they have a commitment of seven years, and they know they're going to get this for seven years. Our schools are left to think about this every year. Are we going to get funding and for how much? You know, I think that our five schools deserve more, a lot more than the Airport Authority, and the Airport Authority was seven years, $320,000, no strings attached, you know, and that's, these are tax dollars. This is benefiting over 5,000 students, and the quality of our schools affects us all, whether or not you have kids or not. Nobody talked to me about cutting this. I didn't know it was going to be approved tonight, but I do think the schools should have more money than what they've been having in, in lack, because they, they have shortfalls. So my proposal for 400,000, nobody talked to me about this until tonight.
Well, Mayor, I was not involved directly in the discussion about these numbers, so I would not have had anything to talk to you directly about. But what I, what I do know is I am in favor at any point in time in giving money to our schools and helping in any way that we can. This money goes directly to the Education Advisory Committee, who then decides how they want to dish it out to the, to the four Fairhope schools. There is nothing that prevents the council from at any point in time coming back and addressing some of the education or, or budgetary shortfalls that any of our schools are having, and I personally am in favor of doing that whenever necessary. But this is not, in my opinion, a bottom-line number of money that we give to our schools, because I do agree that our schools should be supported. It should be at the forefront of what we do, and no money that the city gives is, is more important than what we give to our schools. But this, this again is not a limit on that number. It is just what we allocate to the Education Advisory Committee. And Robert, I see you ready to talk, and you're our liaison to that, so.
Correct, yeah, I'll speak on that. Yeah, the Education Advisory Committee was only requesting the 350 as they received last year. So I don't know where the 400 came from, and then the EAC also made a recommendation at a previous meeting to withhold any spending to the schools because of the discussion with the Ballin County School Board. Everybody was on track on what the money was going to be spent on. The proposal that came back from the county was not in, in line with what the EAC and the principals had kind of agreed on. So that's when the EAC said, we're going to take a step back and, and reevaluate before we allocate any money to the, to the county schools. I mean, I mean, give them 400, give them 500, give them, you know, give them a million, it would be better than 350, but there's got to be some kind of accountability to the city if the city's going to give this money through the EAC, as the EAC is the, you know, watchdog, if you will, for these funds.
All right, so by doing it this way, we have given the EAC exactly what they asked us for.
But are you saying that this money's not going to be given to the schools?
No, that's not what I said.
Well, I mean, what did you mean by the, to put it on hold, any allocation to the schools?
Because the, all the local principals gave recommendations through the county, back to EAC, of what the funds will be spent on as far as curriculum improvement, education, you know, additional substitute teachers. Everybody was on the same page. And then the EAC got a recommendation back from the county school board, saying we just need math tutors at every school, and that was not what we had multiple meetings with the, with the local principals and the school board about. So when the, when the EAC got the request back from the school board, as they are the liaison to the schools, they decided to, to put a hold on it and, and try to regroup with the county.
So not, they're not withholding the money from the schools, they're just withholding it until they can figure out exactly what everybody wants to agree on?
Right, because what the county came back with was not what the EAC and everybody agreed upon.
But, but again, I'm correct in that, I mean, by allocating this money, which is what the EAC asked for, there's nothing that prohibits us from giving additional money to the schools if and when we see fit. Is that right?
And if that's the case, then we don't need the EAC. If we go, we'll go back to the old program where we just give each school 35,000, they can spend it on, you know, whatever they want to spend on, and there's no accountability. Or we have the EAC, who is an accountable party for the city, watching what the funds are spent on.
The accountable party would be the principal. I mean, I think they're perfectly capable of being accountable for this money, and there's a big difference between $350,000 and $35,000 to each school.
Right. What I'm saying is that, you know, if we allocate 350, which is what the Education Advisory Committee asked for, and then that money is allocated to the multiple schools in Fairhope, if after that money is allocated, it's determined that there is an additional need from one of those schools, whether, which, which one doesn't matter, but if there is an additional need that the council could, could consider at an additional time, additional monies to fill in whatever shortfalls there may be.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And it, it moved into this scenario where schools gave recommendation on what they needed, because when they just, every, each school got a $35,000 check or whatever the amount was, some schools, they didn't, the principal said, I don't need anything. So give all, if, if this teacher wants 200,000 worth of guided reading program, and that's going to help her school, I don't need anything this year. So EAC spend the majority of your money on this, and it goes along with acrobus study and everything else. So instead of just writing a check to each school and say, here's your Christmas money, it's done more on a needs basis, and they, you know, one school might get something one year, and they might not get anything the next year.
So we do have a motion and a second?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, well, I will entertain a motion to, to adopt or to approve item number 15.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Next is public participation. This is for any, any item you'd like to discuss. We know you quite well, sir, but will you please?
Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street.
Thanks, sir.
On what you just discussed, is that in writing? Will we be able to see those items and how much the council says we're, we can spend? Would that be in the minutes? Because y'all have printed copies, but that's the first time I've heard about these amounts.
Yeah, well, now, now it's.
You voted on to do it.
Sure.
But we haven't even heard anything about it before, have we?
Since I read it all into the minutes, it will be in there for sure.
Will it be in the paper, so the citizens will see it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a copy of this.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I am Ron Allen, 6612 Waller Bridge Drive, Fairhope. I'm a little confused about item number 13, that at first, no one's going to propose the motion to approve the resolution, and then you did, but I'm confused. I don't know where anybody stands on the resolution and why you were reluctant to at least propose it. So I'd just like to have some feedback as to why people voted the way they did, so citizens can understand what your position is.
I'd be happy to weigh in on that. My reluctance was, I felt like this was something we had discussed before as a, a reason that we needed to promote somebody from a part-time position to a full-time position. That was clarified that that was not the case, and, and I guess I just, I looked at it and I thought, well, I'm, I'm not really sure what this person's going to be able to get up to speed on in 90 days, but at the same time, we are going into, you know, lighting of the trees, Christmas parade, all the downtown events during Christmas, three Mardi Gras parades, the dog parade.
New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve. We have a ton of stuff going on in the next three months, and I thought, well, if they can help at all for three months' worth of expense, then maybe it's worth, worth the opportunity to allow them to try to help.
Yeah, that, that was my, my reluctance, or my concern, were similar to what Jimmy said. You know, I, I have a reluctance in general to hire temporary fill-in, and I know it's needed sometimes, and I'm not, I'm not critical of that, I know sometimes it's necessary, but I feel like I've seen it a couple times too many, at least recently. Maybe it's, maybe it's just coincidence that it's all at once, but I don't want us to get too reliant on, on that need to always have a temporary fill-in. I think there are times where there is, there, there are enough people to do, to fill in, and that was just, that was my concern.
I'll second that.
I voted no due to the fact that I felt that the staff that we have now will be fulfilling the job that we are going to be required for the next few days, because we don't have enough time to train somebody in the next 90 days to do the same work, so they're going to be doing the work anyway. So that's why I voted no.
Anybody else?
T.J. Murphy, Fairhope. Just a couple of concerns or issues I'd like to bring up. There's been among the, the community, there's been some concern that the mayor's going this direction and the council is going this direction. Mayor, you're the chief strategist of the city, and the council is the one that kind of supports that. There needs to be communication between the mayor and the council and between the council and the mayor. I guess I would like to get, you know, mayor, on a scale from one to five, how supportive and how much communication do you, or how open that communication channel is between the council and you?
Communication is next to nil.
One being none, and five being, you know, great.
It's basically none.
And then vice versa, Jay, since you're in the seat, you can speak on behalf of the council, or how it's going the other way.
I picked a good time to sit in this seat, didn't I? No, I think, I think there are, maybe not lack of communication, but there are plenty of misunderstandings and miscommunications. I'd say that's pretty accurate, yeah.
Okay, well, and, and so you can.
And I think, and I think the misunderstanding is kind of couched in the, I think there's some disagreements on the fundamental responsibilities, and I think that's been there from the beginning, and I think that's part of the, the holdup.
Okay, well, so you can kind of understand how the community is concerned that, that we're kind of stuck. If, if, we're stuck in the middle, nothing's going to get done unless, you know, that there can be something.
I will tell you that I am always available. I have always, every meeting we've ever had, it's been by my invitation, and most of the time, I mean, for a few of them, I have not met, but it's not been because I haven't reached out. With this budget, you know, I've been trying to communicate. I have gone over and above the call of duty to try to answer questions in emails and other, other ways, because, you know, there is no communication, you know. I can absolutely say 110%. I am here, I am willing to work with y'all and communicate with y'all, but I cannot say that for the majority of council.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want that to change, because we have three more years, and there's obviously a lot more that we can accomplish if we do that together, but the communication has to come from both sides. And as far as working behind, you know, closed doors, I'm not doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm doing the job of the mayor, which is really, I work 24/7, this is my job.
Yes, ma'am.
So I try to communicate as much as I can, you know, but I am very busy, but there are a lot of decisions that are made behind closed doors. I usually find out about the agenda when everybody else does. I find out about decisions that are being made, just like everybody else. I mean, no one on council talks to me about anything on the agenda, and I would like it. I mean, there's no question, even with the budget, instead of nitpicking and pointing fingers, help me. I've never said I don't need help, you know, but that's just not how, how it's been. And I think we have a lot of work to do, but I am absolutely more than willing to do those things. And as far as understanding my job, I absolutely know what my role is. I think that understanding the job really, that's where I feel like council is unclear, what their role is.
Well, we, we appreciate the job that all of you're doing and how you expose yourself to a lot of the, the issues, and it's, it's not a job any of us would intend to have, so we do appreciate that.
Definitely not.
But you understand the importance of working together to hopefully you'll make some.
It's an oath, actually, that you take when you take office. It's an oath to work together for the good of the city. It's an oath that I take very seriously and will continue to do so.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of other things, if I have time to do that, just, just quickly, on the moratorium report, how, you don't have to, you can answer this after I leave, but how is that going to be disseminated? I found that in the Planning Commission minutes, is that going to be?
It's, it's online.
It's online now?
It's, it's on the website, it's been on the website a week, and did we post it also on Facebook? No, no, just the link to the email, to the website.
It's, it's on the city's website? It's, it's on the city's website?
Yes.
Under the Planning Department?
I think if we can post just the link to the website that takes you to that, because it's a very comprehensive update on, on Facebook, then you can just read it off of the city's Facebook. It'll take you right to it tomorrow morning. He'll, she'll put that on the city's Facebook, and I'll also share it.
So it'll be on the Facebook?
Well, it's already on there, but instead of telling you exactly where to find it, we're just going to put that link on the city Facebook.
So for those of us that do not have
I will, give me your email. We'll email it to you.
Well, I guess, I guess that's the other concern is, if, 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 if we could use the city's website as the main means of, as the base and use all the other stuff to help
Right.
carry and disseminate that, that, that would really be
The, we have
I think there's a website elf working on now.
We have a new website. Well, that's, but we have, we have a new website that we want to do live, to, to finish it. It's in the budget. The budget's not being approved. It looks like it's been extended for another month.
Okay.
But it's a very user-friendly website, and I just, it's going to be great. It really is.
Good. And then at the last council meeting, Lynn mentioned about the survey results would be posted. Where, does it get posted, or where are we on there?
Survey results for what?
The survey you did, that Sherri Lee did on getting input from individuals on the growth of the city and input going back
Oh, that, I think that was back in beginning of August, and we did post that back in August.
Oh, that has been posted.
That, that was part of the State of the City address.
So what survey, when we're talking about the
The State of the City address, that's when we did, I think it was August 1st, maybe? And then we posted all of those citizen input. Is that on the website also?
Okay.
And I
Maybe I missed that. I guess I just got confused. And then town hall meetings?
Yes. What we're going to propose doing, because it's a lot of work on Jeff's part to do the live streaming, we talked about having a kind of recap of what we do for our department head meetings, 30 minutes to an hour before the work session. That way, it's already, we're already here. A lot of these department heads have to be here for the work session and council meeting, so it's really an effort to consolidate a lot of people's time in that way. But I am doing breakfasts, and I have one tomorrow morning at Quail Creek at 7:45. It's going to be painful. 7:15, never mind, 7:15. And I'm trying to do breakfasts at different locations also, in addition to that.
Well, the reason I ask is because, you know, we were hoping these town hall meetings and breakfasts are great to really discuss about the plan. For instance, I noticed in the moratorium report, if I'm not mistaken, I've been confused tonight, so if I'm not mistaken, it said that, that the Planning Department is going to recommend form-based code and zoning to the city council. And I'm trying to figure out
TJ, I'm going to have to cut you off in just a minute.
Oh, okay.
There's, a lot of the different updates
I'll end on that, thank you.
Just so you know, will be presented after the budget, because they're ready and they're part of that moratorium update that's online. They have to be presented individually for council approval, but they are written and they, they've been, you know, the Planning Department has done those. Lynn can give you more information.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public participation? If not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.